Six o'clock, call the meeting to order, ask the church kick roll.
DeVore?
Here.
Vogel?
Here.
Walters?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Sarchet?
Here.
First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I have no additions or corrections.
Motion to approve as presented.
Okay. Roll call.
Sarchet?
Yes.
DeVore?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item is public comments. Is the time and place for comments for any item other than those in a public hearing? Wish to speak, please. Podium, state your name and address for the record. Anyone who wishes to address the council at this time. Hearing none or seeing none, moving on to item five, consent agenda. Take a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, discussion? Roll call, please.
Sarchet?
Yes.
DeVore?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item is new business. Under new business, item A, PCCEDC. Mr. John Calhoun, retiring executive director with a presentation to council. For the last time.
For the last time.
Unlegibly. And I'm gonna be all over the board.
Chocker. Oh, I'm sorry. How was that not allowed?
First of all, I have here plaque that I'd like to present to the council. I do want to get a picture after the meeting here for your support of the Four Seasons Festival. You guys, the city plays a big part in this festival and helping getting it done. From the council giving us the funds, some of the funds to help us with that. Public Works, Fire Department, Police Department, everything, you know, the staff here at the office is always tremendous. I can't say enough about how how much of help it has been for us to have you do this for us. Unfortunately for the festival, we didn't have a very good year. As a matter of fact, in the 11 years I've been involved in it, it's been the worst year possible. It was 115 heat index on Friday and rain and storms on Saturday, but we survived and miraculously it quite rained in, I think maybe 6:30, something like that. And we made a few phone calls and had a bunch of people doing Facebook and all that. And we had a huge crowd Saturday night, which saved us. So as a matter of fact, that Saturday night was as big as our Friday night usually was. So it brought us back a little bit. That was the bad news. The good news is, we didn't have to ask for more money because we planned for that type of thing once in a while and actually had surplus there to take care of that. So I'm sure they're gonna be ready to go for next year. But thank you for that. And just so you know how big a part of that really are. So it's huge. And that does a lot for Folk City. I've done some introductions. Joe Butler is here from our board. John Johnson is the president of the board. Bridgette is, Bridgette is Bridgette. Usually you're on every time we have council meetings. So she does everything for us. And especially, you gotta give her a good pat on the back for the RV TV. I gave her, let her take that project on her own and she ran it and she did one half the job doing it. So we're proud of that. Good job. Also, we've had a hiring in our office, obviously to replace me. We had a hiring process. We created a search committee which consisted of Jason and Chelsea and John Johnson and Brandon Converse. We contacted the partnership and asked them to send out notice to the practitioners group, which I belong to, which is all the development people around the metro. And we got that and got a couple of applications there, had a couple of local inquiries from people that live in Folk City that we talked to. And then did the interviews and came up with Al Lorenzen. Stand up, Al. This is legacy, man. I've known Al for, I've known Al for a long time and he's a good man and he knows what he's doing. I think he can take this to the next level. He's got tremendous contacts and he'll start Friday. So I'm excited about that. I don't know about you, but I am. I just wanted to give you a little bit of a feedback on the last, I came back in October of last year. Finish out that year and to complete this year. We've been, we've been busy. We got eight businesses have opened since that time in Folk City. Which is good. They're small businesses, but they're businesses. We have seven businesses that are pending. I'd say they're probably in the 70 to 80% range of commitment. So we're happy about that. The only one I can tell you about is the one I had confirmation on right before I came tonight. Dr. Douglas Layton will be coming to Folk City. He lives in Folk City, but he's gonna have his practice here in Folk City. He's going in with Cappus up there and they'll lease the spot, which was the fitness center. So that will be in addition to what they already have. So I don't have the timeline on that, but he has committed. He said he'll start his process of finding clients in November. So we're excited about that. He's a good man. And there's my late vice president. Brandon Converse, everybody. Couple of, couple of things that I've been working on and through no fault of anybody's. They got side, put to the side and I a lot of it I think had to do with the switch between Don and Chelsea and it just, I it was too much to deal with at the time because she was way too busy and I was running out of time to get it done right. But we have talked at our board and approved requesting that the city do an urban renewal process on East Broadway. I think that's worth looking into and I know there'll have to be a lot of work done as far as the presentation on that. But I just wanted to bring it to your attention. We spent quite a bit of time looking at that and Don called in one of the urban renewal experts to present to the board and it looked like it would be a good thing to expand the square that way down that street and to get it developed. So I want you to know that's out there. I think the other significant thing that also I talked to the board about and we sent. Actually, we're working on trying to get in front of you on that is the square parking. We have a real problem with parking. I mean, we can talk all we want about the businesses and having them come in, but the businesses that are there, you gotta, there's no place to park. So we have to look at something different there. I hope you will look at something different. I know I've talked with Jeff Walters about it and I know there's a way that you can adjust the parking that is there. Make it slanted, go to both sides and maybe increase it by 16 to 18 parking spots. Doesn't sound like a lot, but it's, it's a start. Other than that, I, you know, I would encourage you to look at at some kind of parking lot around here because the businesses that are there, it's hard to get to them. I mean, I know a lot of people have come, they've told me they've come down to go to the Papa's or the pub or whatever and there's no parking there, so they just drive on somewhere else. I mean, and we wanna, we wanna bring businesses to town, but we also want to have them stay and be successful. And that's part of being successful part. So I encourage you to keep your eyes open for that. I wish I could have brought them to you myself, but I just quite frankly ran out of time. On the Chamber side, I can tell you that it's never been more organized. Bridgette has done an excellent job of that. If you look at the things that we have over there, including, you know, the festival, the sounds on the square, farmer's market, the RV TV, the square lighting, the bike ride, golf hobby. I mean, there are a ton of things that Chamber does to help build Folk City. And the attendance is good, the reception's been good. I think what it does is it helps people feel good about their community. And a lot of visitors come in and they feel good about the community. And I know that people have come in, seen that, that they've bought houses. They've done business here. This all makes a difference. It's a tremendous thing that Chamber is doing. And I can say that they're doing it very responsibly. We do have a budget that for a long time never existed in the Chamber. And so the budget is there and Bridgette never goes anywhere without her budget. So that's good. And it's working. So I just want you to know that this is all it's all a team effort. Because I can tell you that no one person can be responsible for bringing a business into this community or making this community successful. It takes you, it takes all of the city employees and all the people I mentioned before. It takes a good Chamber and a good board and everybody has to work in stride here and work together. There's like I say, nobody can take credit for it and nobody can blame because it's a joint effort. So I just want you to keep those things in mind as you go on. I'm gonna be staying in Folk City, obviously. I love Folk City. Besides that, my wife told me I'm not moving. So.
Are you keeping your same number?
No. No, there.
I just didn't know.
Yes, I have the same number.
Is she gonna block? Okay, just check.
Anyway, I love Folk City, so I'll be here and I'll be available. I don't want to get in the way, but if I'll meet something, the board needs something, anybody needs something. I'll answer the phone. So. And the most important part is obviously I'm here to again request the money. And we're again requesting 75,000 as an allocation for PCCEDC. Al's promised me he's gonna change that name. And what I can tell you is, and I told you this a couple of years ago, it just didn't work out because of various things that I really can't point to. But you know, I think that that number will go down. I have every confidence in that number going down as we build. You know, when we went through this merger, it was an interesting process and it was, we found some snags that we didn't know about. I think that's why it's been harder to take that number down. But I, I know it's getting to the spot where that can happen in the future. I know and I've talked to Al about it and Al knows and wants to do the same thing that I did and try to take that down. And I know he can. But for the time being, for this year anyway, I know we have to ask for 75,000. So that's my request on behalf of the board and I'll answer any questions you have. Yes.
I don't have a question, I just have a comment. I just want to say how you guys stayed within the concept of what everybody in Folk City wanted. The focus has been on the square. You've increased the activity down here. And what it really took, in my mind anyway, was just the leadership. Everybody wanted to do it, but nobody wanted to hit it up. And you guys probably filled that void and that, I mean, that was part of our comprehensive plan, keep the square a point of emphasis to keep the activity down here. And I don't think we could have had the success the last few years we've had without you guys. Because of your leadership that made that happen. In my mind, but we don't know what my mind is.
It's been fun.
Yeah. Good.
The square is a great place and our thought has always been to build on the square. Not build on the square.
Around the square.
Have to hit it on TV.
And also, you got a much better offer than I did because my wife said I could move, but I'm alone.
We've had that conversation.
I just want everybody here, including John, of course, but I know that this is, you know, people don't understand the amount of time and effort that everybody puts in to bring just one business into town, be it's big, be it's small, but it's not nearly as easy because that's probably one of the main things people ask me about is when are we getting this, when are we getting that? And there's just much more to it, right? It's everybody working together like John said. So I just want to thank everybody for their time because I know the boards don't have much money to be on, right? I mean, you're representing your businesses and to help support our community because of that. So thank you for that. John, incredible, you know, he's been great. It's not over, obviously, you know, he's still gonna be around. So just want to welcome Al as well. He did a great job. And again, thanks everybody for the support. We're heading in the right direction.
Thank you.
So I guess I would add thank you to you. I think you've been a great advocate for this town for a long time. Even gave a snotty firefighter a shot at the first festival and I appreciated getting to be friends with you and working for you. In some cases, I could do without the constant Irish ringtone 30 or 40 times at the festival, but that's picking nets. And Bridgette coming on. So the feel-good events, the events on the square, we've knocked out of the park. You guys have knocked out of the park, I shouldn't say. I don't want to take that for for any of that. They've been tremendous. You hear that all the time. I do have to say, you know, we are proving a significant amount of money and I'm gonna vote for that. I think we would be at a huge, huge competitive disadvantage to not, to not do that. It has been a rough couple of years, I think. If you want to split the baby with those events and the economic development, I'm not entirely sure to further, probably a bad way to look at it. But in the short term, I don't know that that's been great the last couple of years. And that's not anybody's fault. It's not. A lot of things happened. I just think that we do need to be at a certain level, results oriented with how we spend taxpayer money. And and yet I don't say that to try and do anything other than, you know, continue. I know people are working on this hard and I know there's a lot that we don't know and it needs to be structured that way. When businesses are thinking about moving, that oftentimes needs to be confidential to a certain degree. I do think updates outside of coming for the funding would maybe be well served as some of the concern. Maybe that's not. Again, I'm not trying to add necessarily to folks that are kind of all over the place. Bridgette, again, does an outstanding job with the events. So there's no issues there. Again, I just do really appreciate all that you all have done, you in particular, John. Thank you.
Thank you.
Al, do you have anything to add?
I would just add, I am looking forward to jumping in and getting started. As Rob mentioned, I think I'm sensitive in this getting off the interview process to being good stewards of the resources that were given. And to me, throughout my career, that means growing the resource pool and reducing our dependence on taxpayer dollars. So that will be obviously job one as we move forward. So we've got a great board. We've got committed people, known this community for a long time and I'm just excited to get started.
Yeah, so I echo that. So fortunate to have the opportunity to interview Al when he came in. And those were some of the conversations that we did have. And I think that was one of my first things that I asked was if we could start looking at ways and and when Al, when you get a chance to talk to Al offline and he can tell you what he did particularly at Wildwoods Ranch or Drake or the various other places that he's been and how he kind of worked from nothing and built it up to something. It's pretty amazing. And so not saying I expect that, but obviously your track record speaks for itself. So looking forward to getting you. On that note, so this is the second time that you're retiring. So, yeah, so the last time you happened to hold your retirement party the same night as the council. Some of us were able to make a very brief appearance. Others had to bail out early and not stick around as late as you tend to stay at those events. So so anyway, so with that being said, all joking aside, I do appreciate you coming back when you were called because that wasn't the easy conversation and I will miss our regular banter back and forth. And I will say along the lines of new business that there isn't a guy out there I think that wants to find ways to bring new businesses here. And there's a lot that we've unfortunately had to say no to for this reason or that. And I'm hoping that can eventually change some of this. So but anyway, with that being said, I do have a little something, something for you. Yeah, because well, see you're retiring in a second. This is it. I told you you weren't getting a plaque, so you're not getting a plaque. So I did tell you when you came back, you weren't getting another plaque, right? Okay, all right. So you got a clock. Okay, so so anyway, this here says, presented to John Calhoun, I don't want presented to John Calhoun, thank you for your countless hours and dedicated service you gave. Hold, it's official. Now you really have to retire. So. I'll get this to you. Thanks, man.
I'm speechless.
Oh my gosh, we got it on camera. Thanks, John.
Thank you, John.
Sure, John.
Don't forget to vote.
So that's one and two. So we'll go to three. Approve annual funding request amount of 75,000.
So moved.
Again.
Rock.
Vogel?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
DeVore?
Motion carries. Thanks again. Thanks to the board for being here and all you guys do. Thanks to the president of the PCCEDC too. We do appreciate all you do. Item B, Resolution 201990, approving and adopting a revenue purpose statement for the venture fee revenues from proposed electric and natural gas franchise fees, reciting their resolution 2019-101, setting a public hearing on November 11, 2019 at 6:00 PM on amendment to the Code of Ordinances with respect to electric and natural gas franchise fees. Just need a motion to set that public hearing, please.
Second. Vogel?
Yeah.
Walters?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
DeVore?
Motion carries. Next item, reports in particulars of staff. Staff, anything?
We need to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed the, I missed C, didn't I? Sorry.
Well, we need to do that and we need to approve Resolution 201990.
What, we just, oh, 90. What did I do? Did I skip over it?
You did.
All right. So approve that one. Resolution 201990. I need a motion for that. Or do you want to discuss that? Is there anything to add? I thought we were just setting the public hearing.
Yep, so revenue purpose statement.
Sorry.
No, it's okay. The council just needs to approve a revenue purpose statement stating how they are going to spend the revenues established from the electric and natural gas franchise fee.
Any questions for Chelsea on that? If not, I'll take a motion on that one. Since you approved 2019-101.
Must have provided Resolution 2019.
Okay, there you go. Roll call, please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
DeVore?
Vogel? Yeah.
Walters?
Now, item C, Mr. Schulte. I'm sorry, I
Just want to vote on it. Let's go.
I like your explanation.
I'm sure you will.
Just I A M U C cluster chain, Mr. Michael.
Yeah, so I had a communication in the council packet and a little information behind it. But really what this is, is I've been going to this since, believe this or not, since 94. That'd be 1994, the Safety Committee. And Cyasso was formed that year and we became part of that at that time. And it's for pretty much our safety that our, my employees specifically Public Works, but it's opened up to other employees also go to to stay current with OSHA type things. And there's other things also, but that's really the main thrust of this. So it really hasn't changed a lot in those, in that timeframe. We, Folk City travels usually to Johnston, Nevada. We travel a ways to go to these safety cluster groups. And in this spring's meeting, a few of us got together and decided, is there any way to do this a little bit better? And the concept, this isn't a new concept, but the concept come up of a more specialized person that's in a geographical location that'll have a smaller group of towns and they will actually come to your town, sit in your buildings, go over your stuff. It's a better, it really is more specialized training is really what it is. And our folks wouldn't have to travel anymore. It would be right here. And some of the other things that I listed there that I give you a sheet on, you know, they'll be here to do safety audits for us. They will come to our safety meetings if requested. But it will be really more of a specialized on-call person and the training will be all part of that. And you saw the numbers, if you read the communication, that I really believe, you know, we're paying right now that annual payment that I have in there. But that is at our lower census car, or census right now, that we know that's gonna go up. So really, I believe that for not much more money, a couple thousand bucks, we can go to this new improved system, I believe. And really, right now, what I'm asking for, they're asking for, since this is such a change, they're asking for just a consensus from councils that kind of headed that way. And then they can button up the numbers, the 2080 agreements, and then we'll bring it back in front of you at a later date with the real numbers, or as close as we can get. So I guess I believe in it. I put this as an agenda item on the Safety Committee that we have here in Folk City. I believe, is Jim here?
Yeah.
Yep. We discussed it. Trace discussed it. We think this is some way, this is where we want to go with this. So I guess that's what I'm asking for tonight is a consensus that this is the way we want to go and move forward with our safety. And we'll bring back numbers in a few months, couple of months and see where we're at and ask for approval at that time.
Safety Committee definitely endorsed it. There's training opportunities, not just at the line level, but for supervision, accident investigation, et cetera, that we all will benefit from. Safety audits from every department. The whole city will benefit. So we certainly endorse that. Glad that Mike brought it.
I've always said that you're, you know what's best for you and for your, your people and that I'd be here twice a month to tell you what's the best thing to do. So just trusting that you're right, thank for your people and Safety Committee. So certainly.
I agree with Dave and appreciate your approach and including other folks. I agree with Dave and appreciate your approach and including other folks, and good job.
Okay.
Yep, I agree with something that makes great sense, and you know, when you analyze the cost there, that it's either gonna cost the same as it would now, or maybe it's more and more focused, specialized, takeaway training, or any travel time, all that kind of stuff.
Yep.
Yep.
What other communities are considering joining this group?
Right now, Johnston, Waukees are some of the bigger ones. Boone County, they will probably be in a different geographic location. There was another, there was only four that had made a commitment. I think it was actually the city of Boone, to be honest with you, right now. We will be three. I know there's gonna be more coming through.
Grimes.
Yeah.
They interested.
I believe Grimes was one of them, but they weren't, they haven't made the commitment yet, but their staff wants to go to it.
But I, I don't think you can have enough or too much on-the-job safety training. It's very important, it's a point of emphasis. It gets, I think, more, more serious all the time, and I, I think, I see it as a real plus. Thank you for the nation.
All right. All right, we'll bring back final numbers and see what we can do.
Perfect. You have anything else to add for under reports in particulars?
Oh, the twenty-nineteen street project starting.
Got it.
That was something that has, just came about. TK Concrete called us and said that they would like to start the following week, which was last week, and they're moving forward. They're moving forward even in the colder weather here, which is just, that's fine. They just have to take some precautions with putting blankets in, in the trench itself, in the repair itself, and then covering the concrete when it's actually poured. So, they're moving forward. We didn't wanna stop them. We think it's good that they're here, they're going, and let's get this project done. So, that's going on right now as we speak, so.
Anything else?
Did you spend a day putting snowplows on?
Oh, you didn't. I can't believe you said it. I, I had to arrest one of you guys on Friday about it, but I can't believe you had to say public.
Randy is the one that is just all over that. We have two plows ready to go, Ron.
I knew you did.
We do not have the full feed.
Thank you. Any other department heads, staff?
I just recognize, men and women make up Oak City Fire Department, as well as Oak City Police Officers, our Sheriff's Office dispatchers, our community partners, recognizing First Responder Day today. You know, do a great job, great effort, for a great cause. And I think communities definitely benefited from the services our people provide. Just wanted to recognize our people.
We recognize them too. Library?
We had two hundred and twelve kids in the library.
That's why I was calling.
Wednesday of last week, so no school day, we kept busy.
Yeah. And you're gonna be open on some snow days, right, this year? Not that we're asking, we're calling for snowboard. You changed your policy a little bit.
The policy has changed so that it's not just a flat of schools, kids will be canceled. And like, odds are, I can probably get there.
Good.
So, yeah, we, we'll, we'll kinda just make those decisions on an as-needed basis.
Public Works can pick you up and take you.
Well, that's part of it, and I'm like, if the lights not clear, they don't clear the doors, we can't open the doors.
I, I know, I, I remember.
Give him Mike somebody to keep him on cloud.
There you go.
James gives it to company?
No.
Anybody else down here? Started this in, got anything down here?
Thank you, everybody that took the Parks and Rec survey. You know, we just had a committee meeting. I think that'll transition to council next meeting. Looking to go, looking forward to going through that. Thank everybody for their feedback. Lindsay, setting that up. We fell a little bit short of the lofty library, number of participants, but we're close. Library one, whatever.
I just want a quick, I think it's overlooked often, but I wanna look at the Police Department, the memo. I always am intrigued by the specifics they put in memo, especially when you're pulling Eudoros, is that right? I haven't seen that right. The, the dog to, to come out, and there was methamphetamine found going through town, more than one. There's several narcotics, but when you, you know, that just really strikes me as being a solid case for why we have what we have, that we need what we have, because that would otherwise go who knows where. And it's great to just get it here, and I want people to know that they don't wanna come.
They won't be watching it right now. I'm just saying. Thank you for that, and for your, continue to put that, those details in the packets for your help.
Don't forget Wednesday, despite the snow, I have lots of kids running around, so watch out for kids and parents if you're helping out, slipping and sliding, hopefully not run.
And then, on the, guys, do I have to go out Wednesday? You can shove my driveway. I saw you walking, exercising yesterday, so. And then for the, the Parks and Recs informational survey that went out, are we gonna have the ability to see the, see the full packet of responses this one? Sweet. Good. So, I got.
The high school.
The rest of the team. So, last Friday went out, so Bridget, if I get this wrong, correct me, they put a new bike rack out at Big Creek, and this was sponsored through Ramsey Pontiac, Ramsey Subaru, sorry, I'm dating myself. Ramsey Subaru, yes, but they, yeah, shows how much I, look, I've been around the area too. So, Ramsey Subaru, but he provided five of these in the three different state parks in the state, right?
In the central.
In the central area, and so Big Creek got one, so Chad Kelchon out there got ahold of Bridget, who quickly gathered as many people as she could, and I appreciate her doing that. But they, last minute, got Fire Department, Police Department, Public Works, some of us were able to go out there. So, it's right out the entrance, but it was interesting listening to Chad, and they even, so if you go in the entrance, and remember, there's that, where there used to be the welcome center there. But he's, they've made a couple of these chairs out of reclaimed wood, and they're starting to do some of this, they're, as they're cutting down trees, they're making different things that's been out there. And they're cleaning the area up, and it looks just really nice, so just a reminder. Chad's doing a really good job out there. Quick plug in for him, but nice, nice rack provided by Ramsey Subaru. He was out there, gave a nice little speech on that. And also, because I had a couple of different people stop me, as a reminder, we're not allowed to blow leaves into the street, that that is a, an offense, and that we do have something that none of the other communities around us have, leaf pile. And so, to take advantage of that. But as a reminder, it's not like, trying to make more work for you guys out there, Mike.
I didn't do it.
No, 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 you did, no, you, no, you guys do a good job. No, you guys do a good job maintaining, and you just chipped it again recently, too.
We did, yeah, last month.
Yeah. Your turn.
Strategic planning, goal-setting tomorrow for staff and council, long-awaited, so. That's it, that's all we have.
That's great, easy. Okay, see, I remembered calling. All right, I need a motion to go to closed session. Just need a motion to go to closed session for discussion of real safety, please.
Hi, Ken.
Roll call.
Vogel, Walters?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
DeVore?
Motion carries, we'll take five, and need normal players.
We're live on.
Do you want to give out this one?